Everybody join us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Lucas starts, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, everybody. Glad to have everybody here this evening. We've got several items of interest. We've got a board member on each end on the telephone here tonight, so I thought I could, I knew I could hear Ms. Smith saying the pledge. Mr. Baker was farther away, Carol, so I couldn't hear him. But I'm sure he was saying it with all his...
I just have a bigger mouth.
I wasn't gonna say that. But we are glad to have everybody here tonight. We've got several things to do, items of regular business, and then we have some special business we're gonna do tonight, so we'll try to expedite everything as much as we can to get all of our work done. Okay, let's start then with the levy rates that we have to set. Can I have a motion for that, please? Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkinson seconds that. Ms. Gandy, would you like to share what we're doing there and the purpose of that, please?
Do you want me to go over? Did you give them that agenda?
That's part of our... We have that.
Well, of course, we got our new property evaluations, and, you know, we kind of all expected an increase because the taxes, the rates had raised, or the property evaluations had raised, effective July 1. And, of course, lo and behold, during the year, we lost about $3.6 million in property value, and a lot of it was due to the cold valuation. So, the big increase as everyone expected is not there. We actually have a decrease in revenue from what we had prior to the property evaluations going into effect. So, as far as our excess levy, or as far as our general levy, it is gonna generate $69,000 less than what we had last year. And, you know, there was all this confusion that we were gonna get all this extra money, but this particular pot of money, we only keep 10%. So, even though we're losing about $70,000, that's only gonna hit our budget at about $7,000, simply because that's part of the state aid formula. Now, the one that does kind of hurt us is our excess levy, and that's usually where we get additional money, and, you know, we were expecting some additional money in excess levy, but that one has also decreased from last year also. So, that's gonna be down $84,000, and that is a true loss out of our budget of that $84,000.
All right. Well, I guess we're seeing that at all levels of government here in the state this year. That's a difficult thing. Now, as far as the procedure tonight, what are we doing here? Is this something we, I see we're gonna approve this and then suspend action just for the public. Could you just explain that, please?
So, what we do is we prepare our proposed levy rates, present it to the board, and then this meeting is recessed until April the 21st. It's always the third, Tuesday in April. And during that time, the rates get to Charleston, they're evaluated and approved by the State Tax Department, and then they'll send us back a letter saying, yes, everything's good, rates are approved. I bring that back to the board, and then they approve, and that's our actual levy rates for next year.
Okay, very good. So, we have a motion, Ms. Second, to present for public inspection the 2015-16 levy rates and general expense fund and the excess levy in compliance with the statutory requirements and subject to the approval of the State Board of Education, the State Tax Commissioner, and the publication made per state code, and that's what Mrs. Gandy just said. Okay, board, are there any questions or any comments about that? If not, I'd call for a vote. Is that a yes vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, an all yes vote. Okay, suspension of action. Now, to suspend this, explain just a moment ago, Mrs. Gandy, can I have a motion, please?
I may.
Mr. Curry made the motion. Ms. Smith, you second?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is to suspend further action regarding the 2015-16 levy rates until April the 21st, 2015, at 6 o'clock here in Hamilton. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, an all yes vote on that. Okay, now, move into our regular agenda items. We've already called orders. We're moving right along here. Okay, let's approve the minutes of the February 26, 2015, special meeting and the March 3, 2015, regular meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Wilkinson, can I have a second? Mr. Baker, second's that? A that all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay, all yes on that. All right. Now, next, we'll see, do we have any, we'll do our public comments regarding the calendar for next year. Mr. Mickie will explain that to us, but we're required to have two public hearings. I thought we'd do that after you did your presentation, okay?
See, I've given you a folder this evening that inside has copies of the two calendars which we discussed at the last board meeting on March the 3rd. Calendar A, which brings employees back August the 12th, the last day for teachers being June the 6th. And Calendar B, which brings employees back to work on August the 19th, a week later, the last day being June the 9th. Attached to those two calendars is the latest results from the voting from our employees. And you can see in red that we picked up 12 more votes out of Transportation for Calendar A, and a total of 10 votes between Duval PK8 employees and Transportation, bringing the total to 206. So, the voting for those two calendars is very close.
Okay. Let's first, let's see if there are any, once again, this is the second public hearing regarding these two proposed calendars. So, we can just maybe see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board regarding this. Ms. Clayton?
Then I have the calendars pulled up, you know, for if we've got questions.
Okay. So, for any questions about particular one, we could bring it on the screen, so...
Initially, I was coming on behalf of the Lincoln County Principals Association because Mr. Davis' daughter had a doctor's appointment, and he ended up making the meeting, so I'm just gonna address some of the concerns that we talked about as principals and as well as concerns that my staff have. Our vote at Duval was 51 to 17 per Calendar B. So, you know, we were very heavily towards Calendar B. My custodians came to me after they heard that Calendar A was gaining popularity, very, very concerned with being able to get the school ready. My custodians work 226 days, and from July 1 until August 12 leaves 29 days. So, you know, they were concerned because we have an old building, they have to move all the furniture out of the rooms, they have to strip the rooms, they have to wax, they have to paint, plus the other general cleaning. Another concern, too, was with our limited custo, or our limited maintenance staff being able to get the summer projects done, because it seems like Dana, we run right to the end to try to get everything done by the time school starts. And we have several things at Duval that need addressed. As far as administrators, and Dawn may add on to this, you know, we were concerned about being able to get school ready to open. In the summer, there's numerous professional development opportunities for administrators, and then you're looking at 29 days. I work 230, which means I work 30 days in the summer. Usually, I work 25 to 26, and then I do four or five at the end. Dana Snyder works 240. The elementary principals work 215. And so, being able to meet our extended calendar and be able to work when we need to work is important to us, but we also don't want to miss out on the opportunity to take advantage of the professional development information that's out there for principals. So, that would interfere somewhat with that. I know the code allows you all to accept Calendar A, accept Calendar B, you don't have to go with the vote of the employees, or it even lets you have, you know, consider a different calendar. And the vote, obviously, 245 to 26, 206 is very close, and as far as administrators went, we voted 7 to 1 for Calendar B, and we had our Principals Association meeting. Of course, that's not on there. Mr. Agden at Down Valley was the only one that wanted Calendar A, and as I talked to him today, just to touch base and make sure that I wasn't gonna misrepresent anybody, he said his staff voted unanimous for Calendar A. He felt like he had to support his staff, and he said, you know, and he liked Calendar A. You know, Jeff and I have had many conversations about the fact that, you know, some people, we thought the two weeks at Christmas kind of would swing the vote somewhat, but more importantly, getting paid August 28th as compared with getting paid September 11th. So, you know, that was some of our issues. You guys are kind of like me now. We're kind of old school. You know, an old school summer meant that you had time for picnics and reunions and vacation. In other words, you had family time. And, of course, the state mandating that we have 180 days has certainly kind of made us rethink how the calendar has come about. You know, I was a part of the team that developed the calendar. Matter of fact, I tell them all the time that I wish they had a job just calendar developer, and that's what I'd wanna do, because I had about seven or eight calendars developed. But, you know, I wonder if we couldn't consider a compromise because the vote was so close. And just simply, if you look back there at Calendar A, you could easily compromise that between the two calendars, one start on 12th, the other start on 19th. It'd be very simple to take three days off and start on Monday the 17th. That would give us a little extra time. Take the first two days that you're gonna, so with this, it's gonna be C-E, C-E, and B. Then come down at Christmas, take two days off Christmas, and one day at the end, and you're still gonna get out in a reasonable time. Because the bottom line is, we can go to the end of June. You know, we all hope that we don't have another 25 days off school, but obviously, there's no guarantees, and I say that because I've booked a big flight to Myrtle Beach and because in the middle of February, late February, I thought we were fine. I thought, we're not gonna have to make up any days, and kaboom, it happened. So, you know, there's no, I mean, we can go to the end of June, and so do we want to make sure that we allow plenty of family time for vacations? And, of course, at Duval, we have no air conditioning in the hallway, so it's about 100 degrees in the halls in the summer. And, you know, in June, a long time, it's still pretty cool, but in August, it's really, really hot. So, anyway, those, that's my concern, and I'm gonna just, do you all have the letter that you got from Dawn?
Yes.
Well, I made a copy because I told Dawn that that was so little that I made it larger so we could read it, for those of us that can't see very well. So, there's a little bigger copy of that letter, and... I just hope that because the vote was so close, that you will consider possibly a compromise in when you adopt the calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. He was wanting to address the board. Mr. Davis? President of the association, you know, you had to speak to the board.
Yes. Yeah, I won't say too much because Ms. Clayton pretty well wrapped up the feelings of the Principals Association. She probably didn't emphasize enough vacation time, but, but anyway, that aside, you know, in our meeting, you know, when you talk about everything that goes on in the school building, even at Little Midway, you know, last year, we had Energy Express. It ended on August 1st, and that left us with very little time to prepare our building to get it ready for that first day of school. I mean, we cut it really close, and luckily, Tina, if it wasn't for Tina Black, we probably wouldn't have made it. She found subs who could come out and, you know, give us a, she found five, as a matter of fact, subs to come out and get that, to get our building ready in time. So, we really cut it close. So, when we're, and again, she spoke about staff development. As far as retreats, retreats for staff retreats, as far as national conferences, you know, that takes a lot of days out, you know, vacation days out of the calendar for employees. And I know five days doesn't seem like a lot, but really, when you're talking about getting a building ready and getting your staff those extended days in, who have extended days, extended days doesn't really hurt myself or Mr. Roy as much, or even Miss Napper at Ranger, because our custodians don't have as many extended days. But when you look at, you know, the big picture with the middle schools and the high school, it really does make it the window very, very tight to get those days in. So, that's why the Principals Association's felt like the labor star would benefit us much better.
Are there any workshops already scheduled for the summer that you all have already planned in?
Well, I can speak for Midway, and as a matter of fact, I saw on the calendar where, you know, where we have teachers going in June, and then we also have teachers going in July to national conferences. And then we're doing also, we're doing a staff retreat at Stonemall also in July, so three days.
I was thinking of administrator ones that would affect you all.
Well, I'm going to one of the national conferences, CD, and I know that Ms. Lucas is scheduled APL for us at some point in time this summer. APL for administrators, I think it's two, three days.
But the administrators go to the retreats also?
And we do administrative retreat, right. Principals do one as well. That's usually two, three days.
So, are all of those days part of your 30 extra days that you might use, or...
Well, they could be, and stipend pay is offered as well. And to be honest with you, a lot of times, even as principals, we take the stipend pay ahead of the extended days.
But really, you're, I guess, the gist of your concern really wouldn't matter, because you're talking about more being able to be at your school, get it ready, and just opening right?
Yes, sir. Including scheduling and everything else that we have to do as well.
Okay. Anybody have anything to say?
Before I sit down, I would like to thank you all. Mr. Curry gave me a little bit of update on my, on the outbuilding that I had asked for, and it's, it's almost there, so I want to thank you for that.
He's on top of that, I assure you.
Thanks very much.
I'll be to see you next.
Does anybody else have anything about the calendar, any comments?
I'll just, I'll go ahead and add, if I could, but our vote was 41 to 23 for Calendar B, and as they already said, it takes a lot to get the building ready. As far as, the only person in my school that's really affected by that is me, because my custodians are two of five. We just have to plan accordingly and make sure, but I just wanted to make sure that I let you guys know that I'm here to support my staff in that. And, of course, I know the other, the high school, they all have those extended days, some are 30, some are 40, and it's just difficult to get in. The more time we can get to prepare, the better off we'll be.
I don't think we want to do our extended days in, like, November. I mean, that's not a time where we need the time to work. We need it in the summer to get ready for school. What happens if we take stipends, and that puts us in there going in, you know, I don't think that you get the best of us when we're going in in November to work a day because we have an extended day that we need to work as compared to when we're working in the summer to prepare for kids.
I think we understand that, realize that, just like you said, you use most of your days before school starts opposed to the end of every school year, the shutdown of the school year. I'm gonna look over at this table here. In the proposal that Mrs. Clayton made there, if we were to move three days, when I did my counting, if we start on the 17th, then 10 days would be the 28th when that first pay period ended. Is that right, Jeff, Trish, or Earth? Am I understanding that correctly? If we, you know, if we started on the 17th, the 10 days is the 28th, right? Okay. Now, that being said, when would be the payday for that window soon? I mean, would that be a September 15 payday, or obviously, it would be a...
It was September 11. I think we did stick with that.
Yeah, we could probably do the 11. With that ending on the 28th. Because what happens is we have to have a couple of days to get it to the bank for the direct deposits, so it would probably be on the 11th before we could tell.
Security, because from what I've heard, I think that is a big selling point for the calendar, is that the first payday would be, what, September the 1st, something like that around that?
August 28.
August 28, better than, okay. So, that's one of the, I guess, major selling points of that, is that the first payday would be August 28, opposed to, what, first part of September 15 through 11, or something like that?
Mr. Pris?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I think that it impacts everybody, but I think the people that are impacted the most are teachers and administrators trying to get schools ready to open. You know, and I understand the concern about the pay. I mean, it kind of comes out in the wash, because they may be working after June 15th, and, you know, you've already paid them for the year, and then they'd still be working.
Well, but I guess they've taken that consideration when they voted that, you know. I can see both sides of those. Mr. Mickie, when does the board have to formally act on next year's calendar?
The board is required to have a calendar approved, ready for Mrs. Lucas, and I submit to the state board by May 1st.
May 1st, I guess we've got a little time. All right. Anything else from any of the board members? Carol, Rowdy, you all hear anything, anybody?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm fine.
You okay, Rowdy?
Yeah, I do have a question for Brenda, because I'm having a hard time hearing a lot of what's being said. Will you give me two speaker phones, Brenda?
Yes.
Would it be possible for you to give me Carol's number, let me call Carol on my phone, and be calling the one with the speaker phone, or just let me ask Carol to herself, because I'm getting a tremendous amount of feedback, and I can hear the people that are presenting, but not speak.
Hmm. We did have a problem, a little problem today, because we thought we had a little emergency. So, you think if you call her cell phone, that you all can...
I have the capability of being on my phone to have most calls. So, what I can tell you is if you think it would help to have only one speaker phone, you can give me Carol's number, I can ask her to my phone, and see if it sounds better. I don't want the baby Carol to hear my name, so I can't on the computer.
Carol, did you hear that Rowdy wants to call you?
Okay. Tell her to give me the number that she called.
Okay.
I can hear all of your calls.
Okay.
Rowdy.
You come out, we can hear you better, too. I don't know whether that's...
Yeah, we can hear her better than you, Rowdy. Okay, that number is...
Is it Carol on her cell phone?
No. No.
On a landline.
She's on a landline.
Okay.
Don't you love technology?
Now, do I sing you both on a hangup, and I'm gonna call you back?
Well, if Carol, if the phone that Carol is on is the better phone, and the right dial number is...
Yes. Oh, oh, no, to this phone here.
I don't think you can do that, Brenda, because you're gonna have to make the call.
Yes. This is a phone that we just keep in a desk, it has no extension.
It might, does it have the capabilities to have two on the same line?
No, and that's something that we, Mr. Daly is going to take care of, but it's not possible to not.
Okay, well, what I can do is, I can hear you, but I can hear you on the speakerphone. You can talk, but you can't hear somebody.
Well, he's just gonna have to speak up. Let me move the phone. Let's try that.
Move it over here real close, then. Can you hear me now?
Yep, it's breaking up.
We're as close as we're gonna get. Okay.
Hey, Steve?
Yes?
Tell Rowdy to call me. I'll put him on my cell phone and lay it up on the desk. Can he hear you? Can he hear me?
I can, I can, I can hear him on the desk.
Well, somebody suggested that you call their cell phone.
As long as he's not too wind, too long wind.
Sir, if you do that, you're gonna be here a long time.
I mean, he can do that on my phone, and of course, I'll have to plug it in, since there's some power, because eventually it'll run down.
Yeah, use Jeff.
Well, I mean, he can tell on my phone, can he?
We'll get my number.
Yes. Call, call me.
Okay, I'll call you if you're calling, and we'll see if that works better.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Do you all want to hear Sons of Marshall?
Yes.
Somebody deleted, I know.
This is unusual. It's rare, those two. It's rare that sometimes they're more.
I think he had one surgery, which is...
Yeah. Of course, mine don't work in here, so... Mine uses, it's the tower, the 18T is much better.
Oh, is it up there? Is it?
Yeah. I think so. Suddenly, there was signal with the board office. I mean, this was a dead zone a year ago.
Can you hear me?
My turn.
All right. Somebody speak?
Carol still there?
Yeah.
You over there, Carol?
Can I say one more thing about the calendar before we move away from that?
Go ahead.
One thing I didn't say was that I had several parents, you know, that come to me and concerned about, and they preferred the later start. I don't think I said that, you know, I talked mostly about employees, and, but, you know, several, several parents prefer the late start. And Jeff, did you say you heard that?
That's true. Parents I've spoken to are in favor of the later calendar.
Well, I know I've gotten comments from people, you know, of course, a lot of it is, you know, it gets online, and you start on August the 5th, and all kinds of that. I said, no, that's not true, but, you know, we'll just have to look at it and we'll see what we think is best. Ideally, what I would like to see is, and I'm here just with a couple of members, I'd like to see us start about the same time every year, so it's consistent. Everybody in Lincoln County knows, well, the Lincoln County School's gonna start about August the 20th, or whatever it is, and not know, you know, a lot of people make their plans for vacation while they're on vacation one year for the next year, and they know that, hey, the first week or two of August is still good for me, and we can do that. So, one of these days, I'd like for us to, you know, just say, could we be consistent and try to maintain, you know, at the same time within a few days every year, rather than having an early start, a late start, but that's, we'll see where that leads. Anyway, anything else about the calendar, otherwise, we're gonna proceed. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mickie. Okay, next, we have two gentlemen who have signed in to speak to the board tonight. As you all know, Dallas Plumlee and Travis Long.
I don't know whether they're speaking separately or separately, but however they want to.
We're together.
Okay.
We're tag team. But what we're here to do, again, my name's Dallas Plumlee, this is Travis Long, and we're the girls soccer coach at the high school. And what we come to talk about is something that's been growing for nine years, and that is middle school soccer. We've got, had a high school soccer established, both boys and girls, doing well. We're 2025 kids strong in girls soccer. Boys, I think they had close to 15 or so last fall, and there's still a lot of interest in it, and I understand you hired a new coach, so he's starting to work that as well. But I think it's time that we have a conversation about getting middle school soccer going, both boys and girls. Right now, in the middle school, for the young lady, that her only option for a sport in the fall is being a cheerleader. There's nothing else. The boys can play football, but there's no other sport that they can get involved in. And the youth league, which we started nine years ago, when the consolidation occurred that fall, right now, there's probably 300-plus kids that are involved in the youth league, which is getting ready to start here over at the high school, is where they play their games. They practice at the county sites, but they play the games on Saturday at the high school, and I know some of you have been over there to watch that, and there's parents and grandparents and kids all over the place, and they're having fun, but we leave them hanging in the fall because there's no place to continue the sport. They take two or three years off, and/or there's no activity for them in the fall, and then when they get to high school, then they take back into the sport. For soccer to occur in the county, I know you got, you can't make a decision, because we're just approaching you and getting this on the table, see if it sticks, but you guys as a board, need to know if, decide whether this is something that you want to do or not, okay? We know that there's an interest in the middle schools. There was a large group of kids that played the middle school, and I think there's probably 15 to 20 kids at the Duval alone that are interested in.
Typically, we will field four teams in the little league.
Typically, we, we will field four teams in the little league, and that's for a U-15, which is a middle school age, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, just in the county here, and we'll have enough kids to play four teams, Ranger, Guyan Valley, Hamlin, and Duval. Last year's the first time we didn't have a Hamlin team, but we still, with that, we had three teams of twenty plus kids, so we had around sixty-five middle school age kids. Duval's team last year had twenty, twenty-two kids, something of that nature. My bet feeling is realistically, this will probably just be girls, but I think you can put them both out. I, I think the, the football may pull away, but we won't know until we try to see if you have enough boys to form a team. And you know that the way the rules are, that if we can just form one team in the county, and it could be at any one of the middle schools, then all the school, the middle school kids then are eligible to play on that one team. So I know that we could field enough kids, I'm for certain we can with the girls. There's a large group of kids that started when they were three years old in our local league that have come up, a large group of girls. Hamlin has a team of almost all girls, Guyan Valley has a team of almost all girls, and Duval has a girl, a team of almost all girls that will come up in this. We have, we, they, you can play coed at the middle school age, that's the way we play in the league play. The only problem with playing coed at middle school age is you have to play a boy sketch, you get one boy, you play a boy sketch.
And you really gotta be wary there, because you don't want that sixth grade girl that weighs eighty pounds playing against that eighth grade boy that is a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty pounds.
Yeah.
So you gotta, and you won't know that, be able to address for that situation until you see the numbers and see whether you can stand up teams or not. But I think the, for the process, for this to occur, first, you guys, as a board, need to decide, yes, we need to do this, and we want to see if it'll stick, of course, establish the salaries for the coaches. One of the things that you do as a board is sometime in the next six to eight weeks, you will go through the process of hiring for all the fall sports. That's why I wanted to address this now, is that if we get, if we get it on the table now, then you can put it with the rest of the coaching that you're gonna put out there instead of trying to fix it in the summer, because these new coaches are gonna have some issues they gotta work through. They gotta get certified, if they're not a teacher, professional employee, which they can do, they do it on their own, and it's a class they go to for about fifteen, twenty hours, and costs two hundred fifty dollars, and then they're certified for basically life except twenty-five dollars a month, and that way they're certified. We, they have to go through making a schedule. For my schedule right now, for the high school, I've got nineteen games already scheduled, and it's hard to make a schedule, so, but when a school, school stands up, everybody wants to play, so it's not hard to find somebody to play, or you play JV games, which is good too. And then if we're able to stand two or three teams up in the county, then we can play each other in the county, so they can start building that skill level too. And if, and I know one of the biggest issues, and I understand the principals' issues, is facilities. Everybody's trying to use the same space all the time, it's just, it becomes a management issue. And we always have the high school over at the field on the afternoon on Saturday where the middle schools could play if they wanted to. So, yes, it's an issue, yes, we gotta work through it, but we, but it's one of those things that can be done. And then we've, Travis has already talked about where you have to, if we can't get enough in a team, then we consolidate schools and then build a team that way. Season for middle school soccer is just like the fall, it starts a week later than the high school soccer, and goes to the end of October, and the middle school grade level you're looking at is sixth, seventh, eighth grade kids.
And it doesn't interfere with basketball? It's over overtime basketball.
And generally, the startup cost, and Jeff had asked me to take a look at that, you're dealing with the uniforms, that's thirty, probably thirty to fifty dollars a player, and that's just a matter of what you're looking for, because you could even spare, get a pair of shorts and a t-shirt and put a logo on it, if you wanted to start out low, or low and work up. The players provide their own cleats and their balls and shin guards and gloves, so they already have those type of equipment, and they have it from the middle of the youth league. The biggest expense is the goals. They're anywhere from fifteen hundred dollars for a set to four thousand dollars for a set. The ones I put in the ground were four thousand, they ain't going no place. But, but you want goals that you can move on and off the field to play with, because you still use it for other things. So, and that's just a matter of the coaches and administrators picking the right equipment for the event, and then, of course, like I said, the principals, then be involved in managing the facilities at the school, and who does what, when, and where, and how, and that's one of the big, and then, we have that at the high school, you just gotta work through those types of things. It's an issue of resource management.
It, it's a very small, I think it's an upfront investment for the county to start with as far as uniforms for the first time, and the goals, and, you know, the goals are gonna be a little bit of investment, but soccer is solvent. You have enough, you'll have enough gate, once you get it in and invested, you'll have more than enough gate to pay for itself from then on.
Grandparents come out to woodwork to see the kids play.
Yes, yes, so, and, and I know with the popularity we have with, with the fields down here, all you have to do is come here in about three weeks on a Saturday morning and come down to the field there in Lincoln County, go see how many parents are there, and so it's, it'll be an upfront cost, getting the goals in, whether you do it, and, and we, we even envision if we get enough just for one team, and maybe that one team, you know, if it's drawing from all four, from the other middle schools, then they can all come just to Hamlin, we'll try to foster them along, they could practice just outside of our practice field or with us, coordinate with our practice field, and we'll try to help them along, because it just behooves a high school for this middle school to become a feeder. And if the high school is gonna begin to compete on a triple A schedule, then this is, this is the next step, we have got to get a middle school program running, and that'd be feeding into our high school.
Sure.
We just wanna kind of give a pie in the sky dream of what we, we, we are starting to work towards improving the field, there's some things that are going on, and this is kind of an idea, if the world was perfect and we had all the money in the world we had, needed, this is kind of what we'd wanna see. And Rowdy, I'll give a copy to your daughter tomorrow at school.
All right. But...
So basically, what this is, is like, this is just a concept plan. What I would like for you to do is to look at this concept plan and at some point give us some feedback. This is probably something we need to work with Dana from as far as location. I'm not asking for anything, we're not asking for anything from you today, anything like that, we just wanna, these are the things that we saw that are needed at the field, we need bleachers, we need a concession stand that we can make some of that money we talked about to keep ourselves solvent, and we need restrooms there at the field. So this is a two-part way, that we copied this from Spring Valley's layout, they have a separate building. If you'll see at the top left, the press box, that goes at about the mid yard, the fifty yard line or the mid yard line for the soccer field just outside the fence. It's two-story, the second story is for a press box to do announcing, things like that. The underneath will be an equipment room, and then we have bleachers on both sides. Just behind the goal at the parking area there, if you're looking at the south side of the field, that'll be a two-story building that we have planned there. The bottom half is concession stand with restrooms in the back. This is a copy of the design that the softball field has over across the way, same similar building, same similar build, a little bit larger because we also wanted to incorporate JROTC to have their equipment in there as well, because they use that field and facility.
And Dana Smith has already bought the equipment to bring electric, is it sewer too or just water?
Just, just electric.
Just electric, over from the baseball field to the soccer field, it's just a matter of getting it in bright weather and getting a ditch which and getting those other things there, so the, the, the work is working towards that, and that'll make a difference once we get like freaking water there. Water's already there, it's just about six feet deep someplace, gotta find it, but these are, these are, this is what we're working towards, and it'll take time.
The, the one thing about this too, that I wanna add, is that this is a concept plan, if we can agree that this concept is agreeable to the board, because it is your property, if we can get along with that, with this concept, I believe that the majority of this can be built by boosters. I, I'm fairly certain the majority of this can be built without Board of Education files.
Just for your information, we really, since you all signed in, we can, we have a lot of discussion about this, you know, because I have questions and comments. Ideally, I think it would be good sometime in the future to actually get on the agenda, contact Ms. Powell, get on the agenda, then we can have a little dialogue, and Mr. Smith, Dana back there, he will share with you. At some point, any alteration to the campus at the high school, the board has to approve that, so, you know, he knows the process about that, so I guess what I'm saying, you guys need to come back when you're on the agenda, we can talk, or we at least have a, some guidelines or some thoughts of what your plans are, we can talk about it until then. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Let's, let's follow, Sean myself can vouch for the Saturday crowd.
Sean, if you wanna get a picture of it sometime, you can.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, thank you all very much. Okay, with that, the only people that we had signed in, so we'll move on now to the presentations, and Dana Smith, maintenance director, and we can talk to you, Dana.
I need some feedback.
I was gonna say, what you need to do, just sign in, some orders, give me orders.
Tell me what you want done, how you want, want it done.
Hey, Travis, you and Dallas, now Dana's on the agenda, he's gonna talk to us about maintenance things, but we can, you know, their thought here, they discussed this possibility of the, this review?
I've discussed part of it, I haven't seen that plane, so I'll probably get a, take a look at that.
It's what we've talked about, so.
For the most part, same location?
Yes.
Okay, I, I know a little bit.
Okay, well, just like they were pointing out there, like, of course, you know, we are kind of beating this to death, I guess, but if there's a water line there, at some point, we need to know where all those are.
We're probably gonna find it when we run the LA.
We looked, we envisioned...
And then we'll run Rover and shut it off real quick.
But we envisioned a day when we could see a, you know, can you imagine if we could see the whole campus and actually know where everything is?
Yeah, that would be nice.
Just hint though.
Which kind of reminds me of something I've talked about before, I wanted to mention it, we, we are getting some blueprints made of the Lions Club field with whatever could occur there, and there's a lady at the high school that's been real helpful with that, and hopefully, maybe she'll help us do some kind of, some blueprints at the high school with all these things that we've added, baseball and softball, and getting ready to do soccer, so she's been really good, it's a Smith lady, and them Smiths are real good at treating people and that.
Anytime you're on a plastic pipe, there should be a put mat treasure for it in there.
That's true, that's true.
But at the, at the Lions, because we talked about this, just on every now and then, at the Lions Club, you all are trying to...
Yes, she's made some real good progress with some blueprints, and she's gonna get with Calvin and get a little bit more detail, get some specifics as she goes on site, maybe we can get a bus and take, take their whole class over there and get some more done this spring, whether it is...
Sounds good. Is there anything in particular Dana you wanted to share with us tonight, or just...
Well, I've got a few things here, I thought you might be interested in, I've met with ZMM and, about our Ranger and Hamlin window project, so it is being designed as we speak, and he's been on site, and we hope that the installation can be done sometime in the summer.
For both schools.
For both schools. Just to give you an idea of what, what it's gonna look like, if you're familiar with the Hamlin windows in the front of the middle school, they will be very closely matched up to that. Ranger will be a little bit different, it'll be a little bit more like the windows at Duval, where there's some panels and some marker boards in the middle, so there'll be a little different design on Rangers. It would be more similar to Duval's. Anybody have any questions?
That was one of my questions.
What the status report?
That's, that's...
Mark that one.
Bit it out? Bit it out? We always like to bid it out sometime in April, which gives us time for, to get the windows ordered, usually they're about a six-week time span there, to get the windows in after they're ordered, so we'd like to get the windows in sometime in June when school's out, so that have all summer work on it. I mean, you can do it when school's in session, we've done it when school's in session, but you gotta move one room somewhere else, inconvenience people, and they were real cooperative when we've done it that way, and it's worked, but the ideal situation would be to get all that done during the summer, so that's our goal. The Hamlin HVAC project, bids come in on that, and it's up for your approval tonight, and if we, if you guys do approve that bid, that again, will also be done in the summer. They, they talked about maybe doing some welding during spring break, but it'd be very minor, minor work done if they screw it up. Okay, let's move on to Lincoln County High School Athletic Facility. Me and Derek and Dana has met with a couple groups, we've met with Field Turf, and they have just been awarded three projects in Loken County, and they are gonna have a surveying crew on site this week and next week in those counties, and he is, he sent me an email today that asks if we were interested in going ahead and getting our survey of our property over there, that he may be able to get the fee greatly reduced, or maybe even waive the fee entirely, so that's what's happening there.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
Aren't they not on the state bid?
They are on the RISA, EPA bid, now they are working with another, some other companies, and they're gonna get me that information on who else they're kind of getting together with, but this is one of the companies that's done a lot of work throughout the state on, and with fields and track.
Well, what I was thinking is, if you all chose to, to do that, you could, you wouldn't have to get quotes or anything, you'd...
Right, you're right. This is true, this is true.
Well, that is something we need to get done, isn't it?
I, I told them my goal was to this summer, at least get the base for the track and the field by fall before school starts, that would be my realistic goal.
Well, if you don't get the engineering component of it done, you can't do anything else.
That's gotta be first, and this is an opportunity to, I think, that we might be able to get it and reduce costs. So, if it seems like a general consensus, I was gonna try to pursue that. I haven't talked, I just got the email late this evening, I have not talked to Mr. Christian or Dana Snyder about this, but I think they'll be excited to get that done.
I think that they're on board.
Okay, we've also met with the, a company called Stadium Solutions, who teams up with Field Turf. They provide the bleachers, concession stands, the press box, things like that, of that nature, and they, right now, are working on a blueprint based on information that me and Derek met with him and give him about what we'd like to kind of see over there as far as the stadium bleachers, because that needs to be done in order to get a footprint of the bleachers, then that will affect where that field and track sit, it's all got, it needs to be coordinated. So they're working as we speak on that, and these two companies work together, and they also work together with Musco Lighting and, let's see if I can leave them out, there's another company to make that team up with. But anyway, that's where we're at right now, is with Field Turf and Stadium Solutions, trying to get the exact location of this field, track and field, so that if there's more excavation, and there will be a lot more excavation that needs to be done, so that we know exactly where it's gonna be, exactly what, how much dirt we need to deal with. Just, just to give you a little bit about the seating, Derek decided he wanted about twenty-five hundred bleachers on the home side, the home side would be nearest to the school, the visitor's side would be about approximately fifteen hundred, which would allow them to have playoff games, and it would run parallel with the way the hillside runs in order to maximize our space. That, that site's got room to do what we wanna do, but it's tight, so in order to utilize all of our space, not only did we wanna do that, but we want to put some of the concessions under the home side bleachers to maximize that space, and I think it'll be cost effective as far as, rather than putting a separate building off to the side or somewhere in between the visitor's side and home side, we do want to try to utilize that space under the bleachers for not only concessions and restroom facilities also.
You could use that for support, too, couldn't you?
Yes, yes, it, it just all coordinates together, and it, it's gotta be cost effective, and it, it is gonna conserve a lot of space. Just some estimated cost, I wrote three costs that I thought you might be interested in, and, and this is assuming, this is not assuming that we're gonna do some of this work, provide the base and do a lot of the excavation, but what the... the base and do a lot of the excavation, but what the, the cost that you're looking at, estimated cost, looking at that they're doing as we speak, is a million dollars for the field, a million dollars for the grandstands, and a half a million dollars for the track.
Can you repeat that please?
One million dollars for the field, one million dollars for the grandstands, and a half a million dollars for the track. I don't-
I was shocked when asking some questions about the construction of the track and
I was shocked at how thick the blacktop laws and how much base goes down for that. And then the finishes, the finishes that goes on that track is expensive and that's a lot of area. If you think about even a six lane track going all the way around that football field, that's a lot of area, so. Which I can give you those kind of details as we move forward, as we do the surveying and that would probably be, the next thing I will talk about is the thickness of the asphalt, it's 12 inches thick, it was something like that, it shocked me how thick it was. So you could drive a bus home after this thing, but of course, in order to get your warranties on your turf and your track, you have to, you have to abide by their specifications and we won't want to cheat on the base or try to save money, we want to, we want to keep our warranty, so we want to do what these engineers tell us to do. As to not void any warranties. Any questions though? That are. Athletic fields, yeah. I've got a couple other things in the way.
No, I think just generally what you're saying, we'd like to see it proceed, you know, taking the first step with the engineering and as that goes on, we can move into the others there.
And I'll give you, when I come back to do the maintenance updates, I'll give, I'll let you know more details or as much as you want to know.
Well, we can speculate about these other bases, but until we get the first one finished, you know, we're, we gotta take one step, one of the big steps.
But West Hamlin, our flashers are in, we poured the concrete for the flashers today. I noticed the mayor was here earlier and he's already asking about the, if we want, we're gonna put lights at Hamlin, if so, and when, and they're on our list, but I didn't know if you wanted to go ahead and proceed with that after we get West Hamlins in, or you want to wait till after summer, we get a new budget, or just wanna see how you feel about Hamlin's lights while we're here.
Or to midway after that.
Midway, it's gonna take some talking to get the midways.
It can be done.
Oh, anything can be done.
Well, we'll, you know, what I think about, but like you know what are on Hamlin.
But just to keep you informed about West Hamlin's, we, we're probably, if the weather holds out, looking probably week to finish. They're putting them together now at the maintenance shop, they just started, so it takes a while to get everything assembled.
Now, are we receiving any reimbursements on any of these?
We still have not received reimbursements even on Duval. To my knowledge, right Bruce?
Very, very.
And I send emails and talk to them about it all the time, but we've not seen any yet.
Well Dana, out here in Hamlin, we had them trying to crawl up across the highway.
Yes.
Did they make one now that runs on solar power that, that you hang overhead like that and can operate with a computer?
I can check on that.
You think about just one wire?
No, no, they string them, they have them on a wire across the road down both ends of the school.
I'll let you know whether they have something like that. Those were hardwired, best I recall.
That's where they probably don't want to have solar powered.
But I can find that.
Well, these here are getting now, are solar powered, aren't they?
They're all solar powered, yes. And we had some problems with a couple of locations with the daylight savings time changing kind of messed me up and, or maybe it was a problem in the chair and not the computer, but I've got it fixed now, they worked good this morning and they worked good last night, so I think I've gone back on track. The midway storage building's coming along, it's about half complete. The signs for Duval, Lincoln County High School, Hamlin, they're all ordered. I'm looking probably at mid-April on receiving materials for that and installation should follow up quick.
Do you think about before school's out, we may have those installed?
I think so. Yes, I do. Are there any other projects that you guys have any questions about?
Do I have anything in particular? Dana, I noticed they're doing this work out there at the high school. I don't know what they call that center area there where that big old tree is that are, you know, just things begin to look good out there, you know, with the ramp and everything and I'll then begin to look at the areas that detract from that, I guess, and that, you know, between the baseball and softball field and the ramp, that center area, you know, I'm talking about. Now, what do we, do we have any thoughts about that there to enhance that in any way?
Well, it gets with dirt that's moved and we need to fill, we're still filling that area.
Is that your plan to fill that in?
To fill it in and at least get it to drain to where we can keep it mowed cleanly, yes, that is the plan.
Well, so if we, at the high school, at the football field, we kind of think we're gonna have to cut that down further right?
We will take it right over there and-
So that would be part of it?
Continue to get it sloped towards the middle and get that drained to where we can mow it.
Okay, that whole area is starting to look real nice there, if we can get that done and then that beyond the ramp, hillside down through there, if we can kind of clean it up there now and that would be really nice. Okay, anybody else have anything, Mr. Smith? I don't hear anything from our phone people, so I think that's all Dana.
All right, thanks guys.
Okay, next, we have Danny McKay, he's the councilman here in the town of Hamlin. You want to talk about the resource officer at the high school? I don't know who you want to talk, I look to the back here.
I did pull my, hand my gun, buddy.
I've been watching. Lieutenant Lawrence, what do you got for us?
I've got some actual financial rundowns of my position. I'm gonna give you a brief description of my job duties and stuff I do at the school Back February the 24th, I presented a letter to Brandon, I presented to the board about the increase in the pay before we contract out for the resource officer. It says currently at $34,638.48. Times have changed, at this time I work with Mr. Snyder, Ms. McCallum, Mr. Christian, a lot more, we do a lot more stuff. Before we get on to the financial part, let me go over a little bit of the duties I do. School safety is the first thing. I walk in the hallways, talking to students, watching actions and stuff in and out of classrooms, basically all day. If you've ever seen me over here, you'll obviously see me in any classroom, any part of the hallway. Help principals with investigation issue problems, drugs, fights, intoxicated people, that's what the PBT stands for, stolen items, and also take students home when they're ill. Or if they've been in a fight or confrontation, we want to eliminate, you know, part of the equation, I take them home. Family emergencies, if they got family emergency, nobody can come pick them up, I take them in my car and take them home. If they miss a school bus, I'm only around long enough, I get them home. I mentor troubled students and non-troubled students and that's probably the best part of my job over there, is seeing students that are slowly drowning themselves, having problems in classes, problems with other students or even teachers, anything's going on, is just, you know, let them know somebody is there to listen to them and try to give them a guideline and get them on the right path. Enter classes and teaching non-traditional education, Jarvis Ed, government signed CTE. Jarvis Ed, I do traffic safety with them every semester, they have two different semesters. Talk about DUIs during and while driving, texting, being on a cell phone, traffic laws, and how to interact with law enforcement. You'll be surprised how many people don't know how to interact with law enforcement on a simple traffic stop. It's what everybody calls a simple, but it's, traffic stops are really complex for the officer and stuff, but we try to teach them how to interact, you know, don't, you don't need to freak out and start crying and all this stuff, it doesn't always mean you're wrong, it just means there was an issue.
You want to be a smart aleck.
Right. Government classes, this is, this is one I'm kind of passionate about. As an officer, you know, sometimes you learn what you learn, but teaching our students how to protect ourselves. Constitutional law, search and seizures, civil rights, Miranda rights, and West Virginia law. I think we need to educate our youth so they protect themselves, protect their families as they get older, so they are more prepared to go on. Science, basically crime scene, fingerprints, and it kind of correlates with math, talking about blood spider, physics and different things, different crimes. And the CTE, workplace safety, is always to make sure they know their surroundings and stuff, talking about drug testing, alcohol testing, but one thing about our CTE program is work ethic, is, you know, I know our CTE instructors are teaching them work ethics, you know, you need to make sure you're working. If you're on social media and you pose, you know, as an 18-year-old drinking a beer and stuff, you know, employers look at social media and you really don't want that out there so you can have these jobs. And we have some great students that have come out of automotive, welding, building construction, nursing, and one that's kind of fun is media, is do PSAs. I'm part of the Lincoln County Prevention Coalition and it's basically done with drugs, alcohol, anything being disruptive to our youth. We got a grant, I gave them GoPro cameras, they have shot PSAs and put them on YouTube, have some really good contact with that, I entered them in a contest to win a thousand dollars that is supported by the PRO associations across the nation. And that was a pretty good program. Lunch duties, if students get there quicker before some of the teachers help with lunch lines, I get in there and help out and stay in the lunchroom, monitor students, you know, just wherever I'm really needed during that time. We work on traffic, getting the buses out as quick as possible. I know it's not, we're not always out there due to weather or if there's something going inside the school, like I said, we revert back to safety first. If we get word that there's a fight there, I try to be on campus so I can be watching, you know, certain areas that I hear it's gonna be occurring. And the next one would be prom, after prom activities. Being part of the coalition and being in law enforcement stuff, you know, we have after prom pay for issue and the food pay for for our students out of this coalition I'm part of. Graduation, I bring every, every person in my department to graduation, irregardless if they're paid by the score on. I work with state police and get extra hands in there because that's crowd control, that's a lot of people there and we try to make sure we have, everybody have a nice day because it's all about students that day. Court hearings, if we have problems with students, we file juvenile petitions, which we call the JD charge. I'm always at court with them, sometimes it runs in the summertime because it may be late mid-year when they get in trouble and I'm there for those. With my department, they give me the leniency, if I'm gonna be gone for a class like I've been in the past two days, I send another officer. You know, even though I'm in a class and the board's paying me, but I've gone, you know, gone to a class, we have an officer in there to make sure we have somebody there before a situation to arise. FFA auction, Thursday nights is when equipment comes in, I schedule an officer to be out there late because there's stuff brought in and left. Friday night, either I stay late and have an officer later, or I come in early in AMs to do that. And the next one, of course, I come to the board meetings to, whenever we all need some help or just want presents or anything or anything. Hearing or anything you need. You know, if you look at the, at the part of it, you know, it starts out with students being there 180 days.
Second page.
Yeah, the second page was the money. It's showing $27,446.48. It's, you know, that's, that's why I'm there, you know, it's, it's a contract, but way my salary or why I'm paid, it's an hourly rate how I'm paid and that's how it runs out. The 20 days is when students aren't there, you know, sometimes Mr. Snyder haven't been talking to the teachers or been in there helping set up the school or at the end of the school closing down, it really depends. And then five days during the court, during summertime, is taking care of the juvenile petitions that we filed during the year with issues. I figured it out that we have roughly 72 activities at the high school a year and it's football, basketball, baseball, softball, prom, graduation, the FFA, the JRTC, numerous activities occur and go on. Like I said, the way my salary runs, it's an hourly rate and you know, once you hit that 40, it goes into overtime and that's what that number is there. And then the fuel costs, taking students home or to other locations, to court and stuff, and that's where it comes out. The total, grand total comes out to $50,098.89. Actually, there's one, too many zeros in there, I apologize on that. There's one too many zeros in there. Five hundred thousand, you know, okay. But that's, that's a little bit of describe how, what I do over there on a day-to-day basis. We are currently seeking a grant from the state of West Virginia, it's a five-year grant that will pay for a resource officer at the high school. That will be turned in before April 1st, we're getting close. Grants are a real headache, really meticulous, you really gotta have your numbers together and really get information given.
When would that grant be?
The grant would start in September of this coming fiscal year and then it would finish up in June. That's how it runs from September to June, then it will pick back up again in September for the second year, third year, fourth year and stuff like that.
Is it approved, is it approved for one year or a-
No, it's approved for five years. This one's a five-year that we're applying for and Mr. Curry was kind of going to give me some other information about some others I'm going to look into and try to get some other things going. I've talked to numerous of you all, numerous times of this stuff, I originally did not want to go into the high school, that's not what a police officer is, I followed. That's, that's real policeman. If we create students to be better citizens, we have done our jobs. We're creating a better generation and I really think this program works over there. And I understand we're asking for an increase, but it's just a small increase. The town picks up an extra even during the school year and when summertime's here, I work basically grants from the governor's highway safety program to be out there for DUIs and click it or take it or saturation controls for drugs and stuff like that, but that's where we stand on that.
Okay, right. Now, you have a total of $50,098 here.
Yes, sir.
That's salary, correct?
Yes, that, that's, that's a salary, counting having an officer there. If you kind of go back, I know the overtime is really high price.
What I wanted to get at was the fixed costs, the other costs that are associated with this, just salary costs.
Well, no, the, the fixed cost with the overtime-
Well, I'm talking about workers' comp.
Yes, yes, that's, that's all, all-
Eighteen percent.
It's all together.
What I'm saying is that included in this $50,000?
Yes, yes, that's all together.
So this is a total cost for you?
Yes.
For the town and the board?
Yes, yes. It's, it's everything piled together. It's, you know, we had sexual games over there with Captain Wim, it was a heated, heated game, it was a really good game. You know, I, I sent two officers over there, myself and we had some other tribals going there. We always, if we have a high-profile incident going on at school, whether it's a sexual world, softball or basketball, whatever, we bring as many officers as we can and the town pays for that. It's just extra stuff we throw in for the school, you know, we want to be a part of Lincoln County High School.
Well, if I, so what you're requesting here, assuming we did not get a grant?
Yes.
That the board pay, or fifty, forty thousand dollars of the 50, so 80% you're asking the board to fund this?
Yes.
But in essence, don't you provide more than 80% of your time to the board?
Yes, over, over 80%, we provide more than 80%.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, we provide a lot more than that.
I mean, of your services, I mean, just what you-
Yeah, just, just for me, it's, it's, it's more than that. It totals up to being 1,440 hours just at the school during school hours and that's it, that's what it comes out to being. The other part is 620.
We essentially gave you guys, Brian.
Yeah.
What we've done, other than his, his framework he does- What we've done, other than his, his, uh, the great work he does, we gave you guys a grant.
We thank you for that.
And it's.
I understand. I mean, now, as far as, like, under your travel, you just, you all pay the travel to the town of Hamlin for his expenses, right?
We, we pay, we pay all the expenses, you know, the cars, the, the, the vehicles. We take in all that.
What about now, let us assume that this, we approve this.
Yes.
In the grant, you get a grant?
Yes, sir.
Then we can always come back and come to alter our numbers here a little bit?
Yes.
Make up for that, fine.
Yes. We always, we always can come back anytime that's needed, if we get that. And we never stop looking, they shut down, two years ago, they, they shut down grants because budget cuts. I was really surprised to see one coming up for this fiscal year because of so many budget cuts that we have, the governments have, and we want to try to jump over this as quick as possible, and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, I think that's good, and I think Mr. Curry's giving you a couple of others.
Oh, he has, he has, and I like it. Before I, before I get anything going anywhere, Mr. Smith, Mr. McKibb, Ms. Lucas, we had a meeting over there with the Alistair. I finished that up today. I will have a presentation within a couple of weeks, I think this is a very important program we need to get in our school. This has been bar none the best class of any score, school part, resource, active shooter, anything like that I have ever taken in my career. I just, I thank you, Jeff, Dan, for sending it to us, it was a very good class, expensive class, but a very good class. And I'm now certified to train the entire Lincoln County Board of Education, teachers, students, bus drivers, custodians, cooks, secretaries, and the board.
We heard good things about it.
It, it's very good, and I want to have a presentation together in the coming weeks to come, so we can try to get this thing going for twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen school year. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you apply for the grant, when will you know if it was approved?
If it, if we apply for a grant and it gets approved, it'll be the first part of August.
You will know by the first part of August?
Yeah, by the first part of August, like the first week of August, and then we do all the paperwork and that, and then it starts into September, I think it's set on there, September the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, somewhere around there, when it gives effect.
Okay.
Mr. North, let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
Applying for these grants, does it have to be a police department, I mean, a county board cannot do that, can they?
Uh, no, they can't, and when it goes to re-school, resource officers, the grants are for law enforcement, and they just look for support from the Board of Education of that government body, that they support this program to be in their schools, and that's what that's for. There's very few school boards, even, even state grants for any nation, that school boards can apply for, for law enforcement in their schools.
We were always hopeful, and after some of the tragedies around the country, that there were money to become available, but unfortunately, they just, when they're a hot topic, it might kind of fade away.
It, it's there, it's gone, and it's back, and you just never know how, where it's going to be at from year to year.
Let me ask you another question.
Yes, sir.
As far as firearms in the, in the high school, do you allow to?
Yes, in the state of West Virginia, all gone certified law enforcement officers are allowed to carry their firearms inside the school. It, it breaks down to, we cannot go into federal court, as the way the West Virginia coaches, we can't go into a federal court building with our firearms and the jail systems.
I think some legislation, it probably, there must apply, maybe to others that might.
I, I think it was, I think it was going back toward the new concealed weapon law that you're trying to get passed and stuff like that.
Well, it's like some, they may use, I don't know whether it be employed or retirees that might volunteer their services, or as long as they were, I think, previously.
Yeah, good, within good standings of their department, they retire from.
I just thought you did, but wasn't sure.
It's like Mr. Parsons, they retire from state police, he would be able to carry his firearm.
Okay, you should do that. Okay, thanks, Lon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, everybody, last of the presentations, let's move to the administrative section, please. Do we have a motion?
I may.
Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilkinson. Ms. Lucas?
Okay. Item A is to award a bid to Harris Brothers to arrange labor, materials, and equipment to install three rooftop heating and cooling units for the Hamlin pre-cha kitchen, cafeteria, and adjacent classroom, and a total cost of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars paid for through the county maintenance budget. Item B, to approve funding totaling forty thousand dollars to the town of Hamlin for the resource officer stationed at Lincoln County High School for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year, that's an increase of five thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-two cents from the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen salary. Item C, Southern West Virginia Community and Technical College student, Eric Smith, to perform early childhood observation at Hamlin pre-cha during the second semester. Item D, state travel for the following inquiries. I'm not going to read all of those. Paid for through the Title I funds. Item E, the following adult student to ride a school bus. Item F, according to the provisions of County Policy Act Two Ten, new school calendar and West Virginia Code Act Ten dash five dash forty-five, the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school calendar shall be further revised as follows, as the result of school cancellations for extreme weather conditions, March the fifth, two thousand fifteen, March the sixth, two thousand fifteen. Item G, the submission of a request to the State Board of Education that, if approved, would waive the requirement that instructional days missed on March fifth and sixth, two thousand fifteen, would not be made up.
Okay, questions from the board about the administrative section, anybody have anything? Let me just speak a little bit to items F and G, even if I could. As everyone knows, we're now required to have a hundred and eighty school days, and we've made up the days that we've missed previously, and we identified April the sixth and seventh as two of those. But we're now, are two days shy of meeting one hundred and eighty, or a hundred and eighty day requirement. As Ms. Lucas states here, it's the fifth and sixth of March that we must make up. Now, typically, we could look at spring break, what remains of it, because we've used two days, or it'd be three days there, and then we go to the end of the school year. Right now, for students, that's the fifteenth of June, for staff, it's the sixteenth. So those are our two options, but most of us have probably read here in the last couple of weeks in the newspaper, in the media, we've heard that the State Board of Education stated at its March meeting that there'd be a possibility of waivers being granted to counties. And we don't know much about that more than what we read, but there is that possibility. I think the, the State Board may have the, may be contingent upon some legislation that may have been, or not been passed, we don't know, but they have thrown that out as a possibility. Even if they do permit waivers, we aren't sure what their parameters will be, will it be just for those counties that have missed an extreme number of days, because, you know, some of these mountainous counties missed a lot more than we have, or is it just a few, missed a few days, we don't know any of that. But what we're providing here, at least for the board members to consider, is that consider submitting a request for a waiver to the State Board, but I want to interject, they will meet on April the eighth, right in the middle of our, well, the first day of our, what's left of our spring break. So it seems like, should the board choose to go the waiver route, that we're kind of not going to have the option to make it up any more days in spring break because it'd be the same day. So, but that, they're coincidentally, or whatever, the State Board will meet on April the eighth, right in the middle of our, what started off to be our week's spring break. So anyway, what we have here is, we have, the board has a couple of options. One, we could make up those days and not submit a waiver, and we can make it up in April or June. Or the board could choose to submit a waiver to the State Board of Education, and if approved, we would not have to make up those two days, and our school year would end fifteenth of June for kids to sixteenth for staff. If our waiver was not approved, then we would have to make up two days at the end of the year, and it seems to be the most logical thing, that we would pick the sixteenth of June and the seventeenth. Now, the reason we would be able to use the seventeenth is because I've been told, I think from Mr. McKibb presenting to us first, we were the assumption that we could not convert a planning day, that that had to remain. Since then, we've, Mr. McKibb has found out that they've now allowed the planning day to be made an instructional day, is that in our mind? So that's why, right now, like I said, we were ending on June the fifteenth for students and the sixteenth for staff, but should they not give us a waiver, if we seek one, and we want to make up the days, we could do it on the sixteenth and seventeenth, and use that seventeenth to be the last day for both students and staff. If I said that right?
Right.
Okay. Didn't want to mess up anything. Okay, now, Ms. Lucas, have you heard anything new from the, those that have power in Charleston?
I'm receiving a phone call today from a partner, and they were getting information from counties that have missed a number of days, and they wanted to know what we were doing, or how we were making at the time. I went over everything that we have done thus far, and the two days that are in question are the last two days that we missed, March the fifth with March the sixth. A question also was asked about our, our accrued time, how much time have we accrued throughout the year, and have we used any of that accrued time? From the beginning of the year, Mr. McKibb receives from each school the amount of time that is accrued, and at that very beginning of the year, when it was calculated, I think we had, what, ten point five days of instructional time would be accrued.
Ten point one two five, that's a high school who has the least amount of accrued time within school or county, so you're only as good as.
As the least.
School with the least amount of accrued time.
So I gave them that information and explained to them that we have used some of that time for early out or delays, but we have approximately probably seven days, or around seven days of accrued instructional time at this point, and that we felt we had enough accrued time to be able to utilize the accrued time to make up for those two days. They were, they are in the process of developing guidance and gather the information and guidance to submit to the State Board, for them to be able to make the decision as to whether they would allow counties to use their accrued time through a waiver request. So I felt encouraged through the conversation, there was nothing definitive said to me, but I felt encouraged that they will probably definitely make that recommendation to the State Board, and then hopefully the State Board will allow that to occur. I did ask if they would be sending us something such as a template as far as a waiver request, so that all counties are doing, you know, the same type of a request, and the answer was yes, that they would be giving us a template, and we would just be putting in certain information from each county, so that was, to that.
Should we go ahead and put dates in here in case not this takes place?
I think to be safe.
Then we could go away with the date?
I, I think to be safe, yes, because nothing was definite.
Well, I was, what I was going to say, they weren't going to be able to give you a, a decision before the board met, right? I mean, so we're still convinced on what the board does in April.
Yes.
Getting back to what Fred said.
Unless they call a special session, you know, who knows?
Now, and you, by virtue of the board proving the, the waiver request, this template you get, I guess you ought to just be filling in that information, and the board wouldn't have to act anymore, because we've already said that we wish to request it, it'd just be a matter of you administering, we're dealing with it, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I think all the board members, you know, we've tried to share the scenarios with everybody there before, what Fred just said, so is it, I guess, the, or our, the way we want to pursue this is seek a waiver, and if that waiver's approved, we won't have to miss up the days, but just as a backup plan, designate two days as our makeup days. And if so, would somebody like to make the motion on item F as to what those two days should be?
I'll play, and you?
So Mr. Curry's made the motion that you make up March the fifth on June the sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, and March the sixth, we make up on June the seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, should we need to. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Larry's second, already grounded, thank you.
I'm doing these.
I'll third.
Oh, he'll third, okay. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay, all yes. Brandon, just so you'll try to keep up with me, I know I live around here, but I'm, I'm kind of isolating these two items, and then we'll deal with the other administrative items. I think you called, you figured this out, haven't you?
That's your number, we did that last time.
Okay, I'm pretty true. Okay, let's go to item G. Now, one thing I would like to do on G, on the last sentence, could we strike the word would not? Because it sounds a little bit awkward there. So what I'd like to have now, then a submission of a request to the State Board of Education that approved the waiver requirement that instructional days missed on March five and six, two thousand fifteen, be made up. A motion for that, please.
I may.
Ms. Smith, can I second? Mr. Curry, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay, right, I didn't know when my battery had gone, get dead or not there. Okay, good. All right, so everybody understands what was going there, we'll just have to wait for the State Board's decision on that. All right, so let's go back then, can I have a, a motion for, or we have a motion on the floor then for items, administrative items A, B, C, D, and E that we haven't voted on yet. Is that an all yes on those items?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Randy, you a yes on the other items?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're finished with administrative section. Okay, now, let's go to the finance section, can I have a motion, please? Mr. Wilkinson, motion, Mr. Baker second, Bertie.
Item A, scheduled invoices totaling nine hundred sixty thousand six hundred ninety-nine thirty-two, and we probably need to add that note that invoices are available at Central Office for inspection.
Does anybody have any questions about any of the items on the financial agenda? I don't hear anything. Okay, anything further about that, Bertie, we need to know, just routine, as far as pay and bills, then. Okay, all those in favor of the finance item, this percentage, is that an all yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay, let's go to the personnel schedule, any motion, please? Mr. Curry, can I second? By Mr. Wilkinson?